Row call, Commissioner Berkowitz.
Here.
Commissioner Osborne. Mayor Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Naughton.
Here.
Commissioner Marion.
Here.
Calvin Bonenbucker, not here. Chief Peterson.
Here.
Rhonda, here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to call us to honor those people that have served us in the armed forces and other people that we want to honor. Okay, we have two minutes from the last meeting. Do I have any comments on, or do you make a motion to approve? What's your question?
I'll make the motion to approve in there from the last meeting yet.
Seven with the eleven.
One second.
The second, if you agree to approve, all in fair sound.
Aye.
Leave everybody voted aye, so that takes care of that. Okay, now, we're going to have a presentation by Womacko. Are you ready and prepared, or do you need more time?
No, we are ready.
Ready willing?
Ready willing. Good evening, my name is Sneaky Graham, I'm a senior planner with the Public Senior Area Planning Council.
So, would you face the audience so they can hear too, or stand over the podium or something?
One sec.
You talk a little louder?
I'm also here with my colleague, Dave, who's a principal planner from Womacko, and we're hearing some comments from him this evening as well. We have a PowerPoint presentation, but we printed it off just sort of remembering that the setup of this room is a bit different. So hopefully this is a little bit easier for some folks. First and foremost, we want to say thank you for placing this item on your agenda, we really do appreciate your time. Dave and I have been working very closely with Cecil County, planning and zoning, and also an advisory committee made up of a variety of stakeholders, including state representatives, local, as well as members of the public. And we've been working for more than a year to develop the Cecil County Bicycle Plan, so we're basically at the end of the process. Our purpose for being here this evening is twofold. We want to present to Rising Sun the components of the final plan, as we promised you back in, I believe, March or April when we came the first time. We said that we would come back and present the final recommendations, and we also are seeking a request, seeking an endorsement of the plan. Unfortunately, we were unable to keep our original schedule, we hoped to meet with you all before the Cecil County Commissioners did approve this. Nevertheless, we are still here, we do want to present to you the final recommendations. The document is also posted online, it's a really long document, and initially we started printing off copies to meetings and things, and then we noticed that we were sort of wasting paper, so it is online for people that...
Is, by chance, is this the draft, if I've ever heard? Twenty eleven, it's about 104 pages, that, okay, yeah, it's pretty tough to read.
So we've been directing people now to go online and to download the document, it's really long. There's also a link, you can get just the executive summary of the document as well. So the presentation, basically, on slide two, it just covers, it's organized in a way that the document is organized, how it's handled, and how the background, we know that when we came here before, there were a few of you that weren't here, and we do have some new faces here, so we went bring everyone up to speed. We'll also talk a little bit about the bicycle network, as well as some additional system improvements and then implementation in the forward. On slide three, we'll have the purpose of the plan first. Let me just say that there are numerous benefits to bicycling. It improves the accessibility and efficiency of our transportation system. There are health benefits involved, it promotes healthier lifestyles, there are environmental benefits involved because it's a non-polluting form of transportation. It also connects communities on a more of a human scale, so there's a social element involved as well, so there are a number of benefits, also economic. The genesis of this plan developed when we, Dave and I, were working with the Alton Bicycle Plan. And there were a lot of issues that came up with, you know, residents, not only within Alton, but other places, other towns, and also to points throughout the county. We weren't able to address that in full measure under the scope of the Alton Bicycle Plan. And so, there was a submission submit to Womacko, mainly from the stakeholders that were involved in Alton. We also found that through a public opinion survey, the 64% of survey respondents in Cecil County said that they desire better places to walk and bike, so we knew that there was really a need for us to go back and to look more comprehensively at bicycle issues countywide. So the purpose of this plan was to develop a shared vision for the county as well as the towns, because the plan includes unincorporated and incorporated areas of Cecil County as well. And we've really been pointing out that this is a strategic time to begin looking at bicycle planning, because we're really at the beginning of a lot of growth that is expected to come to Cecil County in the next two to three decades, and we can really avoid a lot of policy retrofits down the road if we wait too long until growth really takes place. There's also a lot of benefits when considering a lot of the growth within the bicycle tourism industry that's really growing. We also see that there are a lot of examples, not only in cities and places that are afar from Cecil County, but there are a lot of examples right in Maryland. There's the Williamsport, Maryland, that Williamsport, Maryland, and Frederick County. There are a number of places throughout Maryland where there are small towns that are really doing things that have a big impact for bicycle improvements. Slide four basically summarizes the five goals of the plan that are laid out to achieve the plan's vision. They include planning and engineering, education, encouragement, enforcement, and evaluation. Evaluation is really important, because as we begin to implement these things, we want to measure our progress and make sure that we're hitting the right targets. And then slide five, for those that are following along, this summarizes the public outreach. Public outreach has been a very important part of this planning process. We've actually spent a significant amount of time reaching out to Cecil County at large, and also visiting with each of the towns several times, actually, and also going on to some bicycle community events as well. And a lot of the comments that we've been hearing include the desire for more off-road as well as on-road. There are also issues with safety and also funding. The slide shows just a partial list of our outreach and meeting activities. We've been really busy trying to really seek out comments from the public to help inform the plan that we have. And I also want to emphasize that this is, this was, and still is, an open and collaborative process, and we are really committed to working with the local governments. And, you know, we're here to listen to what you have to say, to hear what's important to the town of Rising Sun as it pertains to bicycling. Chapter two, slide six. After we did the assessment, looking at existing networks, and also identifying where the gaps are within the existing bicycle system, we listed out several challenges and opportunities, and we sort of broke them out into categories, corridor intersections and bridges. And the plan, we list out some of the countywide needs. They include enhanced visual cues, such as warning signs, things to let motorists know that you may expect a bicyclist on this roadway because there is a designated bicycle route. Other things like enhanced intersection conditions, some of the issues that we've worked with with some of the other towns included. How do you deal with blinders and steep creases, such as in Port Deposit, that was one of their issues. Also bicycle parking, it's lacking throughout the county and many other towns. I think someone just mentioned, as I came in, that I parked my bicycle here, and they said, "Well, there isn't exactly a bicycle right here," so I'm not sure where I would park it, but those are sort of, these type of locations are the locations that we would recommend, those key activity centers, like a government building, or, you know, a park, or some sort of employment center where large people, where large amounts of people would be getting to, and they would want a safe and secure place to park their bicycle. On slide seven, it lists, it shows a map of the proposed countywide bicycle routes. We actually broke out the proposed routes into two levels of hierarchy, the countywide routes and then the local routes. And each of these routes would complement existing bicycle routes that are already established, such as SHAs, designated bicycle routes, and they also provide access to points of interest. The next slide shows a map of Rising Sun with the local routes. Slide eight, and it shows, and the base, the proposed routes for Rising Sun basically built off of the Maryland 273 corridor, which currently carries a significant amount of recreational riders through the town. We've also included streets like Mountain Walnut Street, as well as Maryland 273 that might provide, excuse me, Maryland 274 that might provide better connectivity for those longer distance trips. There's also an opportunity to connect the Port Deposit and other areas outside of Rising Sun, maybe through the Acrero Trail, which is also part of the Lower Sussman and Heritage Greenway. And by the way, they were actually very involved in this process, and they did submit a letter of endorsement to the county, and they're very excited about this plan, and excited to connect their trail, as well as seeing some of these other local trails being connected as well. The next slide shows a table within the plan, along with each of the town maps, we show a detailed table to accompany the maps, and it basically just lists out all of the segments that are shown on the map. So for Rising Sun, you'll see in the table that many of the additional segments state install sharrows and share the road sign. And the reason for that being is that a lot of your existing roadways are, you just don't have the right way for, you know, an added bicycle lane or some other sort of bicycle facility, and so what we're saying is, it would be more practical to have a shared roadway facility, which throughout the town, your roads are already functioning as shared road facilities. However, you are lacking some bicycle signage and pavement markings, those key things that would make conditions a little bit safer. They would be those visual cues to motorists that you might be sharing this road with a bicyclist, and it also sort of has some other implications as well, of, you know, how do motorists and bicyclists behave, play nicely along a shared roadway? As I mentioned, bicycle parking, we added an additional slide here, it just gives a little bit more detail. When talking to some of the towns earlier in the process, they wanted us to provide a little bit more detail, but what do you mean by bicycle parking, what type is bicycle parking? So, and that section of the document, it gives a lot of pictures, it shows what are some preferred designs, not preferred designs, why those, the designs that are not preferred, why they're not preferred. Sometimes, certain rack types discourage usage, or discourage misuse. So a rack that might support two bicycles, if a person doesn't use it right, then it can only support one, and then you don't have enough racks for everyone. There's also, there have also been studies that show that bicycle parking has a significant impact on ridership, and also the perception of convenience, people want to take a move to this convenient, and if you get to your entry destination, you don't have a bicycle rack, then it doesn't perceive as being convenient, and that's not the message that we want to send. The next slide talks about bicycle transit integration. We know that most of the transit, the public transit in Cecil County is along US 40 corridor, but there are also, you know, plans to expand in the future. But we still wanted to touch on that, because some of the towns and some of the areas that we had been planning for, they are within the transit shit, and so I wanted to make that connection there as well. The next slide, slide 12, this actually covers chapters six, seven, and eight that group together because they refer to the non-infrastructural improvements, so we're talking about things that are beyond paints and signs. The bicycle community is more than just paints and signs, and some lot of other things like education, creating awareness programs, about enforcement, making sure that, you know, strategies are in place to reduce bicycle crashes or injuries that are related to bicycle crashes, and also education, which is a way to positively promote the benefits of bicycling. So those things are really important, and those chapters focus on strategies that go beyond paints and signs, and some of the enforcement, examples for enforcement may be a bicycle helmet promotion program, where people can come and get a free helmet, or a reduced helmet, they can also pick up brochures about how bicycles safely. Some people don't know the difference between right with traffic and not against traffic, but if you're walking, it's the opposite way. So a lot of things like that that really go a long way. Slide 13, implementation. This is chapter nine of the document, the next to last chapter basically summarizes all of the recommended actions, and they're broken out into two categories, the infrastructure, the paint, the signs, those sorts of things, and then the non-infrastructural, the education, the enforcement. And then there are also some policy suggestions as well, such as a maintenance policy, that when roads are being maintenance, that the shoulders are also probably going to find most places in Rising Sun, but some of the towns really are relying on their shoulder areas to move bicyclists, to make sure that those areas are being paved, because, you know, a little bit of trash, a little bit of debris, that really does slow down bicyclists that are using the shoulder facilities. And you can see in the picture that's shown there, it's a really good example of how poor maintenance of a shoulder really does impact, you know, bicyclist movement. The plan also talks about funding, unfortunately, like, you know, many plans that are put together, there isn't a dedicated source of funding for this plan, but there are sources that the towns can go after, Cecil County can go after. But I will note that most of the recommendations in the plan are along state highways, and the state highway administration has been a part of this process from the beginning. They were even a part of, you know, the Alton process as well. They're very aware of what we're doing, they've commented on the plan, and they like all of the recommendations, and I think that we can really look to the state highway as, in our life, trying to make the roadways through Cecil County better for cyclists or programs such as, state funded programs, such as the Bicycle Retrofit Program, it's been around for a while. It is a little bit competitive, but I think that having requests from Cecil County would go a long way. Also through the recent bikeways grant program, I think it's been around since about 2009. Again, that's a pot of money that hasn't been tapped for any applications from Cecil County. So that's a possible source, and also looking into some private sources. There are a lot of private companies, private foundations that actually provide grants to local governments, and so you could apply for, you know, $500 grant, and you have your bike rack for the town hall, so those sorts of things. And again, this is a long-term plan, so we aren't talking about implementing all these things in the next few years, but just really getting ourselves aligned. So when opportunities come, then, you know, we're already in place to go after those things. And also having a plan in place really does put you in a better situation to go after federal funding as well. So there are a lot of benefits, even though we don't have the pot of money right now to do, you know, a lot of things. It really does benefit the local governments and Cecil County in general for to have this bicycle plan. Slide 14, key milestones, everything's sort of checked off, as I mentioned, we're basically at the end of this process, we've already, we're trying to present to you a little bit earlier, but we've already gone to Cecil County Commissioners, they did approve it November 27. And our last, our last order of business was to go to each of the towns and to the Cecil County Commissioners, so we're sort of, Rising Sun is sort of our last stop. And I will also say that, I mentioned that the Lower Sussman and Heritage Greenway submitted a letter of endorsement. The towns also submitted a letter of endorsement. And northeast is, they've actually gone beyond, a little bit above and beyond just the letter of endorsement, but they've actually, they recently have gone through and updated their comprehensive plan, and they're including the Cecil County Bicycle Plan and to the transportation component of their plan. And Cecil County has indicated that they would like to do that as well, when they go through an update. So I hope that I've touched it briefly, if I can.
I have a question.
Sure.
Now, the state of Maryland has been in on this bicycle and plan for a number of years, I think. So we have a state road highway plan in place, existing, or so it says here. My question would be, why, when they did streetscapes in the various towns, and made the streets narrower in, like, Perryville and Rising Sun, they didn't take bikeways into consideration in doing the streetscapes projects? I mean, you're talking about retrofitting, and we just did these streets and sidewalks, I don't think we're going to be doing them again.
Yeah, that is a question that has come up with me some time before. I will say that, I don't know if you referred to the Maryland Bicycle and Pedestrian 20-Year Access Plan, but that really does take a very broad look at bicycle planning, and that was one of the benefits of actually doing this countywide plan, because we can actually bring it down to the local level, if you look at the...
Well, when looking at our state highway, you know, your map here on the state highway plan, and it's an existing designated bike routes, existing. And of course, it goes through the town of Rising Sun on 273, existing plan. And yet, when we did streetscapes, we didn't make any allowances for that, because the state, in their wisdom, I guess, determined that we didn't need to be part of it.
They didn't have a local plan in place at the time? True, but they don't spend extra money without somebody telling them?
That, this is part of the state highway system.
I understand.
You know, whether we had a local plan in place or not was immaterial, because the state highway, the state highway administration is in charge of that road out there, not Rising Sun. Rising Sun really has nothing to do with that street.
That's a question we can take back to SHA.
That's a good, good idea, because, you know, you're telling us our streets are too narrow for bikeways by themselves, and, you know, the state highway administration is responsible for that, not the town of Rising Sun. Especially on that state, there's two state highways, 274 and 273, which are our two state highways in town. You know, we don't have any control over that at all.
Understood. This is, this document is, hopefully, would not allow that to happen in the future. If the town had put, now that the town, if you really endorse this plan, and say, "These are the streets that we prefer to see bikes on," if the state were coming through again with another approval plan, and I don't know when that could possibly be, yeah, that's likely to help to slow them down.
They had, they had the plan in place for years, otherwise we wouldn't have an existing bike path.
How long have you had a relationship with State Highway?
Well, we've been working on this plan for about a year and a half. So, anything that happened before that, I'm not sure exactly of when they, I'm not sure when they designated the state loops. Yeah, we would have to dig back a little bit to find that out.
You know, when I look at your path through Rising Sun, and going down Walnut Street from 273 Main Street down Walnut Street to Canna Wyndham Road, I don't know that you have ever traveled that road, but it barely holds two vehicles. There's no sidewalks, and there's drop-offs on each side of the pavement. And it is county road up to the top of the hill. So if you're going down the hill, where we have property on one side belonging within the town, and property on the other side not within the town, you know, this is a county road. We don't have any control over that either, and the road is, hmm...
Narrow.
Very tight.
Very narrow.
Yeah, we've been down that road.
We've been down, yeah, I thought you were going down, yeah.
And we actually talked about it at the last meeting as well, and we talked about it, but there was still no, you know, decision to remove it.
Mount Street.
Mount Street, it's also county road.
But it's a wider road.
It's a wider road, it's a possible road, but it's also a county road most of the way. There's a very little of it that's within the, called a town road, municipal roadway.
The chart, the slide?
It may be within the town, but it is not a town road, because there's a sign there that says county maintenance ends once you reach the top of the hill.
I also want to point out again that the chart behind the map lists the types of treatment, so for Walnut and Mount Street, we know that there isn't enough with, you must separate a bicycle lane, and that's why we're recommending a sharer or some sort of signage, or something like that, like in the short term.
Also the signage on 273 and 274 is state, they don't allow us to mess with their signs.
Right, we're not, the recommendations that you're bringing to you don't necessarily direct the town to do the work. That's not, that's not part of the plan. But the plan is, if you've endorsed it, if this is the plan that you want, then we submit this to State Highway and say, "This is what the town of Rising Sun would like to see in terms of bicycle improvement." So if there are potential improvements in this list that are not something that you want to see, then you told us.
But what you're saying is, if we endorse this, this plan, as you're submitting it tonight, as opportunities come up, it will already be part of the proposed system?
Yes.
And you can then take advantage of that?
Right, so when the county's got some work, well, basically for signage, we didn't even wait, and that's how we go back to the county itself, but these are the routes, the county routes, that Rising Sun is interested in seeing signed and placed in. And then that would go through their process.
And what in the plan would be Rising Sun's town's responsibility?
Usually the local, at the local level, you're looking for bike racks. I mean, those are, those are improvements that, they're relatively inexpensive, as Sneaky noted, there are funding sources to help with those improvements. Really, if there were town streets that you would want to have something improved on, then that would be added to the plan. And this is a living plan, it's not, this is it, you can't make any changes, it's done forever. Really, what we're here tonight is, what we heard last time we were here was, you were looking for a connection to sort of divert some of the bikes that come up Main Street, and they're on the hill, and there are cars behind them as the cyclists are chugging up the hill and holding up traffic. And so, you gave us this route to use Ryan Drive and then go down Colonial Way to 274, which was a more desirable route. Other changes such as that are getting incorporated into the plan, but what it did to you is basically a framework for the things that the town of Rising Sun wants to see.
Okay, and they still need to get out to 276, and so they're still going to go chugging up this hill out here so that they can get to 276, unless they go out Pierce Road.
Let me make a suggestion, reform a committee. Mr. Marion is in charge of Parks and Recreation, so he'll be in charge of the committee to come up. come up with a plan. We could sit here all night and talk about bikes, but, and, and it's a good idea, but I mean, to have some bike plan, but I don't think we can settle that here this evening.
No, we're not trying to settle it. We're just trying to answer questions.
But you're just making a critique of it, Joanne. And, you know, I think it's a longer range, more extensive survey of what's here, what can be done. We're, we're not gonna.
But if I'm wrong, you're asking for a decision tonight because you guys have to go forward with somebody else, correct? That's what you guys are asking for. So even if we formed a committee, we would be past the deadline.
Well, I, I wouldn't, it's not as hard and fast as that. I would say we're looking for is an endorsement of the idea of a plan. If you want to say we endorse the idea of a plan, but we've got some details that we want to sit down and work out with you, then we'll move forward.
Well, my concern is this, is if I say that I'm for this plan and I endorse it, I'm not going to regret it two or three years down the road if somebody decides they want to tear up somebody's nice sidewalks and, and build a, a bike lane. I, I'm not gonna say that that's the town of Rising Sun's responsibility.
Well, we, since we haven't, no, we are not in charge of the plan. So we would not say put in a bike lane. If no one in the town, and if you're forming a working group, the town, the town's got a final say over what they want to see as part of the plan.
One of the recommendations in the plan is to form an advisory committee to continue the conversation about bicycle improvement. So an advisory committee is part of the recommendations to have members of the residents of the, of the town and Mr. Marion.
We've settled that.
Well, I, I actually think that since you're in charge of streets, it should be, both of us should be on the committee, streets and sidewalks.
I agree.
Well, we don't have to, not establish the committee, it's just that we're in favor of bikes or not favor of bike participation in bike plans. I think that's what you're asking for tonight, is that correct?
Yes.
I mean, the details are to be worked out later. You're just planners, you're not the implementers.
Right.
So, so I do have one more question.
Okay.
Since the county's adopted a plan, why does each municipality have to say we endorse it?
Because it's incorporated and unincorporated in Cecil County. Also, you have your own local jurisdiction, the county can't tell you what to do, so you would have to.
Yeah, we, we still have local.
To some extent, you just can't say, the county can't tell you.
Well, I will say that throughout this process, the county has continually said that we want the towns to be involved because we don't want, we don't want to tell the towns what to do. So they've been very cognizant of that issue.
That's what I want to hear, you know, you know, why, if the county passed it, why does each municipality have to pass it? They just have to say, these are the routes within our town that we think is going to happen.
Right. Well, initially when we started this, the, the idea was to do a countywide plan. And then we thought, well, it doesn't make sense to then come back to each municipality after the fact and go through the process again. So it's, it's slowed the process considerably to make sure that everybody got involved, all municipalities were, we were going through the process altogether. The county was probably a few steps ahead. They've already added some things to their ordinances regarding bike parking and things such as that. But again, the county's probably not gonna put out money for signs on county roads within Rising Sun. The town of Rising Sun doesn't, doesn't want that to be a, a bike group, a signed bike group. So that's why we're here really is to make sure that whatever improvements that are in this plan are gonna affect Rising Sun or something that the town of Rising Sun is in support of.
And I mean, I will go ahead and say, I, I spoke to the county executive regarding this plan. I spoke to Terry about it. And that's basically what she said, which was that it's really up to the towns to decide. You know, Cecil County has decided this, so the towns decide.
Thank you for incorporating some of the things that we had brought to you, to you before. I, I like the fact that you now have that way to get around the big hill coming up Main Street by going up Colonial and then back over two seventy-three.
And I think probably the planning and zoning should be involved in it, and that makes it in your area also.
So are you asking for an endorsement letters, that what you're asking for?
Yes. Anything, given it such that, you know, it's an endorsement of a general plan and you'd like us to come back and work through some of the details and accept it all because again, we wanted to end this plan that everybody, all the towns can live with, that's our goal.
Well, it's a cooperative between the state, the county, and the town, so, you know, it's not all, one person don't all, draw everything.
Even beyond.
It should be an integrated plan.
I was gonna say that even after adoption.
Okay, do we have a motion? However, your pleasure is.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we endorse the bicycle master plan as presented by Will Mapco.
Well.
Or offer a letter of endorsement. Is that, you have a letter of endorsement, correct?
Okay. Lou, that's it. Say my second.
Well, I, I, let me restate that. I make the motion that we offer a letter of support for the proposed bicycle master plan presented by Will Mapco.
Okay. The motion is that we, the town of Rising Sun offers a support for the plan as presented by Will Mapco. Is that?
Yes, thank you, sir.
Okay, do we have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, move to the second. Is there any discussion, anybody from the audience?
Yeah, I was wondering what the cost is this and who, who's gonna pay for it? I mean, it kind of seems like playing a fiddle or, you know, treating birds right now, but.
Well, one of the things that we pointed out throughout the plan, actually in chapter nine, and the implementation, we tried to, well, we actually did provide a cost per year.
How much is it?
Cost per year estimate of each, like the different recommendations, like a share or a bicycle parking. One of the things we also pointed out as well is that some of these recommendations, they would get implemented when a road is going through their regular, going through their regular maintenance program. There are dollar amounts, the cost per estimate is in chapter nine, but we haven't said that this whole plan is X amount of dollars. I think that it's a little bit difficult for us to do that because you have so many different things that you have to take into consideration. What if you provide ten racks? Or if you just decide to provide five racks? Or what if you provide ten, ten miles of.
Adopting the plan does not, does not.
We're not at that point.
Does not force anyone to pay any money right now. There's no dollar figure test of plan because it's not say, once you adopt a plan, you have to go and do this and this and this. What, the only way this plan proceeds is if the county and the towns wish the plan to proceed. So it could, unfortunately, it could be a plan that gets adopted and puts on a shelf somewhere. There's just no cost, no cost. Every time county or town says, what do we have to do to get this? Then we sit down and work out what the cost of that is.
So do you guys work for free right now? Or how does, someone's getting paid.
We are not consultants.
We're not consultants.
We're not on the pay to be described. This is part of our normal tasks.
They're separately funded. It's not all, it's.
We actually provide planning assistance to each of the towns. So if Rising Sun wanted us to come out and do a pedestrian plan, that will be a part of our, our work tasks, so it's.
So if Rising Sun decided they didn't want anything, Rising Sun wouldn't get charged anything.
Correct.
After this. Okay, because that would be great.
I have a question.
I, I have some discussions.
Okay. Now, the bikes right now are allowed to share the road anyhow, right? They don't even have any special markings or anything like that for them to share the roads currently, right? So I'm trying to understand the exact purpose of spending all this money to put signage and stuff up just to let people know that it's okay to, that, you know, bikes are sharing the roads. I mean, I go through these backroads going to New London all the time, roads that really I wouldn't think a bike should be on, and bikes are there all the time, you know? You know, I am aware.
In those cases, they might hit the road risk.
Well, sure, everyone knows.
What, what you would, what the county is looking to do is designate some roads that they would prefer to see bikes on and sign those roads so that vehicles and cyclists know this is a road that's to be shared.
So laws change for that?
I don't think it changes any laws.
I don't see what the purpose is then. I mean, you're, we're gonna spend a lot of money for signage when that is the rule of the road, is you're shared with bicycles, period. So putting up extra signage to, to preiterate that is kind of futile as far as I'm concerned for the additional cost.
What may seem obvious to some people is not obvious to everyone. And some people don't understand that sharing the road is, is a law. You know, cyclists do have a right to be on the roadway. There are studies that show that things like signage and pavement marking actually do improve a little bit of the, the safety issues. And as I mentioned in the public outreach, that a lot of people did bring up the issue of, of safety. We heard from some residents that said, well, I like the bike, but, you know, I don't feel safe out there. So maybe, you know, if you have improvements like that that don't cost a lot, and that's one of the things that we, we did try to take into account, what can we do that might have an impact, a positive impact that isn't very costly? Because building, you know, separate facilities and doing a lot of those things do get a little bit expensive compared to, you know, a sign that's a hundred and fifty bucks or something like that.
Right. Well, I just think there's a lot of state roads that could use that money more so than implementing some new signage and things to educate.
But that's not your decision.
I know, I'm giving my opinion. You asked for opinions and questions, I'm giving mine, so I'm giving my opinion.
We, we need to get back to what the town needs to do.
Thank you, Vince.
Thanks.
My discussion, Stephen, has to do with your awarding and endorsement of the plan as proposed here is, eliminates the need for our committee to come up with alternative areas. I like the areas that you came up with. And I think signage helps because people do forget the bicycles are out there. But your saying, making a motion to endorse the proposed plan as presented bothers me.
I would, I would agree with Joanne in the aspect of, I would, and I'm not sure if this would be okay, but I would like to put in there that it's non-binding. I don't want something that's gonna.
Okay, I guess, I guess that's why I said proposed. That way I was, I was indicating this isn't written.
We're accepting the proposed, that means that we're looking at this proposed thing and we're accepting it. But if we say we're, we are accepting a, the idea of creating a bicycle plan for our town, I would go with that because that's really what you want. You want us to say that we are.
In support of a plan.
In favor of a bicycle plan for this town, not necessarily this plan, but something similar.
If you, if you want to make a motion to amend my, my motion, that I think so that a friendly amendment, that is fine.
I have a little bit more discussion if I may, look.
Well, why don't we get the motion before you start?
Well, he has discussion on.
This.
The original.
Before, before you make an amendment, yeah.
Taxpayers' dollars. How, how much taxpayers' dollars are we talking are gonna be spent towards this?
Can we just?
It's all determined by what the county and the towns decide that they actually want to see.
We're not at that point yet. You've gotta have a definite plan.
Well, not those United agencies, we're not, family mandate or what gets.
No, but what I'm asking is, are you gonna put forward and say you might want to be interested in, in higher taxes to?
No, that's not, we're not gonna suggest higher taxes. Really what you're gonna get, and this is at the county level, a framework, if the county has designated some routes or even asked S H A to consider some routes, provide, provide, you know, improvements, the next large road project that we come through would incorporate those improvements in that project so that we wouldn't be able to go back and retrofit because that's expensive and difficult to do in many cases.
We, the people of Rising Sun, have control of what happens in Rising Sun to a certain extent.
As much as you do now.
That's Jeff.
I would just like to add my voice to, to the end. Anything that comes to a development program is hardly ever contained within the estimated cost.
Well, we won't get into all that. That's philosophical arguments and we're down to a definite action that we want to hook towards and plans towards. I think some of the comments are getting too far into the details of what happened because none of us know what's gonna happen right at this moment. So, okay.
Ready for my motion?
I'm ready for your motion.
I would like to make a motion to amend Stephen's motion on accepting the proposed local bicycle routes and instead say that Rising Sun is endorsing the idea of.
It's a whole new motion, right? Why don't you just make a new motion and then we can.
Well, so we have to vote on the first one first.
No, we vote on the amendment first.
Well, if I'm making a whole new motion, then I'm not making an amendment.
Well, then we'll vote to withdraw the first motion. How about that? You wanna do that, or you wanna go it that way, or you wanna try to wiggle words around?
Um.
I'll, I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay. Stephen has made a motion to withdraw his motion.
No, I withdraw my motion.
That's all I can do.
It's off the table. It's off.
And Stephen, I would again defer to you because you speak so eloquently. Would you please rephrase the motion?
Actually, I think what you said was, was perfect. I think it provided a lot of sense. Why don't you go ahead and make a motion?
What did we say?
I, okay, I make a motion that we endorse the idea of local bicycle routes and bicycle pathways and signage without actually adopting the proposed local bike routes in this because we really need more time to study it and make sure that those are the proper routes. And we will form a committee to take care of that.
I second that.
Well, I don't know if I have, you have it down, Rhonda?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So, and motion, you know, do we have a second?
Who's second?
Okay, okay. Is there any more discussion of that motion? Any on, all in favor, say aye.
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 You said no.
You said no.
You?
No.
Oh. Okay. All, all, most passes. Okay.
Thank you guys very much. Thank you.
And when you're ready to, to form a committee, please contact Will Mapco.
Do you have a card?
We have an honored guest here with us tonight that did a heroic thing in the town of Rising Sun. He was the man of the hour and responded in a heroic fashion and, I guess, foiled a robbery in, in place or in progress. So we need more of that. We need participation of all the people and it's not what we do, it's what we do collectively that counts. So for that, I think for that, we're gonna, it's a paper deal recognition to Sergeant Joseph Appleby. Would you come forward, Sergeant? Whereas the Marion Commissioners of the town of Rising Sun acknowledges Sergeant, retired Sergeant Appleby of the Maryland State Police, and whereas acknowledges that his heroic action disarming a rocker with a loaded handgun aimed at the store clerk inside the Chrome Derry and Deli located in two hundred block of West Main Street, and whereas recognizing the danger, the situation, and that his action may have prevented death and injury. Whereas for this significant act of heroism, we salute him. Therefore, on behalf of the Rising Sun, I am pleased to offer our sincere thanks and honor Mr. Appleby for his brave and heroic act.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That's what we need more of. Okay. Now, the next, next caller, this is David, thanks for coming.
Thank you for your time.
That's what we need more of. Okay. Now, the next, next caller of business, David Davis. Thanks for coming.
Thank you, folks.
I feel under stress.
Are you gonna preach?
Would you like me to?
Maybe not now.
Maybe not now?
Okay.
I have just a couple of things to share. My topic is community enrichment. Is that the way it was written down?
That's right.
Enhancement and enrichment?
Anything you want to...
Did we use either one of those two there?
Absolutely.
A little enrichment enhancement?
Enhance.
I am, has anyone seen the Lincoln movie? Anybody have it on your list of ones that they plan to see at some point when things calm down? I think most of us feel that way. I feel like that, that movie, if you go, have a chance to go see it, it really shows the art of compromise and the fact that you really don't need to agree with the person that you're trying to come to a consensus with, but you need to take the approach of having two ears and one mouth. When someone is speaking, be quiet and listen, and not necessarily be thinking about what words that you want to try to say next. I think you probably find this within a relationship, that works well. I always used to attribute a quote to Lincoln which is wrong. So if I've ever quoted this to you, I apologize because it's, people are about as happy as they make up their minds to be. Have you ever heard that attributed to Lincoln? It has been many, many times. Turns out he didn't say, he did not say that. But here are a few things that he did say, and I would just encourage everyone, both around here as well as just anyone here, just actually consider to focus on a few of these words and see if there might be something to learn from them. All of these are verified to have come from Lincoln's mouth, okay? I am a firm believer in the people. If given the truth, they can be depended on to meet any national crisis. The great point is to bring them the real facts. That's one. Another one. I don't like that man. I must get to know him better. I will prepare and someday my chance will come. If there's anything that a man can do well, I say let him do it. Give him a chance. This is a, a little humor in here. If I were two-faced, would I be wearing this one? If you look for the batty people expecting to find it, you surely will. It is better to remain silent and be thought of fool than to open one's mouth and remove all doubt. Not saying that that applies to anyone here. Saying this one here. My dream is of a place and time where America will once, once again be seen as the last best hope of earth. My great concern is not whether you have failed, but whether you are content with your failure. Nearly all men can stand adversity. But if you want to test a man's character, give him power. Never stir up litigation. A worse man can seriously be found than one who does this. Public sentiment is everything. With public sentiment, nothing can fail. Without it, nothing can succeed. The best thing about the future is that it comes one day at a time. The best way to destroy an enemy is to make him a friend. Last page. The dogmas of the quiet past are inadequate to the stormy present. The occasion is piled high with difficulty, and we must rise with the occasion. As our case is new, so we must think and act anew. The people will save their government if the government itself will allow them. The probability that we may fail in the struggle ought not to deter us from the support of a cause we believe to be just. The things I want to know are in books. My best friend is a man who'll get me one I ain't read. Another human. Last three. The way for a young man to rise, to improve himself, the way for a young man to rise is to improve himself in every way he can, never suspecting that anyone wishes to hinder him. These capitalists generally act harmoniously and in concert to fleece the people. Isn't that the truth? Last two. Things may come to those who wait, but only the things left behind by those who hustle. To stand in silence when they ought to be protesting makes cowards of all men. Those are some things that might somehow, if we apply them, lead to a community enhancement. Last thing we lost, this man to heaven. Anybody have had a chance to read any of his books along the way? Zig Ziglar, lived well into his eighties. I had the chance to meet him when I was a waiter in a restaurant down in Potomac, Maryland. Most enthusiastic person of his, of his age that I ever met, and just filled with wisdom. And was doing motivational speaking right up until his very last year. He read some, he wrote, over, he wrote See With The Top, which is a bestselling book of all time. This was his second bestselling book, which was his sequel to that called Over The Top. Well, he put together something at the very end, which I'm gonna finish with this. I have some ideas on the future of the town. I believe in this town. I think there's some great things that are gonna, that are gonna be in store. I hope that everybody has resolutions for 2013 that include really moving this town forward in a major way. I appreciate the commitment of each and every one of you. I want to particularly thank you, Bob, for the diligence and your commitment to going out and squeezing the flesh on hot days, knocking on doors and engaging people in conversation, showing that level of commitment to, to the process. It's uncommon, and I think you're gonna be commended for that. I don't always, that doesn't necessarily translate into a vote of confidence, but I just wanted to say I respect you for, for having done that and getting out there. And we'll talk more about the future. So here's what he wrote called The Top. Let me give you a sip of water. I know I've probably used up my time.
Well, you didn't have time since you're on the agenda.
I go out to the couch and sometimes have this next to me on the treadmill. The kids, because of my age and gray hair, maybe the way I move on the treadmill, say, is that an oxygen tank? So it probably will be. Maybe I should have the two sitting next to each other, you know?
Hot can there.
I needed it, so you wouldn't see my knees lying. All right. So, The Top. I really just, this has reference to God a couple places. I hope that resonates with everybody. If it doesn't, well, see you in church on Sunday. The Top. You are at the top when you've made friends with your past, and you are focused on the present and optimistic about your future. You have the love of friends and the respect of your enemies. You are filled with faith, hope, and love, and you live without anger, greed, guilt, envy, or thoughts of revenge. You know that failure to stand for what is morally right is the prelude to being the victim of what is criminally wrong. You are mature enough to delay gratification and shift your focus from your rights to your responsibilities. You love the unlovable, give hope to the hopeless, friendship to the friendless, and encouragement to the discouraged. You know that a success or a win doesn't make you, and a failure or a loss doesn't break you. You can look back in forgiveness, forward in hope, down in compassion, and up with gratitude. You are secure in who and whose you are.